To all people that come before us and help us to do the job with grace and dignity and your blessing. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
You'll stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Anybody on open form? Rhonda? Anybody on open form?
Oh, sir.
Okay. Okay. Nobody on open form today? This is a works session. Items included under work session are intended to provide opportunities for city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take any formal action on matters presented at a work session, but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. And this is for event permitting. I'll turn it over to Ms. Sal.
Mayor of Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Director. I was gonna make sure y'all had packets now, and I'm trying to present what I'm scared of. So we're here today to talk about event permitting in Nacogdoches. As you all know, in this town, we love our parades, our 5Ks, our downtown events. There's something going on every weekend. All people that say there's nothing going on in this town are not looking hard enough, especially at the CVB's calendar. But with that comes a lot of logistical concerns, a lot of police overtime, street closures, and the need for some ordinances and some policies and procedures to kind of regulate those things. So that way everyone's treated fairly, we have a consistent process, and we're more transparent. So today in your packet, we have quite a few things to go over. We're gonna go over kind of our current procedures for event permitting, our proposed ordinances that Jerry will cover, proposed procedures, proposed guidelines, a few questions for council that we need some direction on, and then a discussion on event fees, if that's something you all would like to explore. So our current procedures for special events. Right now, if an event organizer comes to the city and says, "I want to have a chili cook-off" or something in the downtown area, or whatever they want to do in the park, there is an event permit that's on our city website. If you go to the "How Do I?" section on the city website, it says, "How do I fill out a special event permit?", you click that and it comes up with a form. So on the user side, it's pretty simple right now. On the back end, it gets a little bit more difficult because since we don't have any procedures, any ordinances, or documentation, we are almost reinventing wheel every time we have an event. We're calling a meeting either per event or once a month, so that way we can discuss all of the upcoming special events in Nacogdoches. We do have a document from 2005 that outlines our event procedures. It's no longer really used, honestly, we didn't really know it was there until recently. And then in 2022, some staff that are no longer here attempted an update of those procedures, but because of staff turnover, it was never brought forth to council for any sort of discussion. So we are still operating off information from 2005 and then kind of our best staff decisions from there. So we're reviewing these event permits, even though we don't actually have an event permit in our ordinances. And so we are hoping we don't get in any sort of trouble for that or have any issues. Right now, since Nacogdoches is a great small town, we all work closely together with these event organizers, and we haven't had any conflicts, but there's potential, if there are conflicts in the future, your staff doesn't really have any legs to stand on because there's no ordinances under there. So currently, when we have these event meetings, it's representatives from community services, parks, public works, police, fire, Main Street, and the CVB. We all come together to meet at the recreation center, discuss these events. Usually it's logistical meetings, and then we have the event organizers come in and meet with us. Sometimes that's very helpful for like Blueberry Festival, because there's a lot of moving parts. Other times, it may be a 5K that we've done 15 times, and the event organizers come in for 10 minutes, and we kind of feel like we're wasting their time when really we could automate a lot of these processes or just outright approve this event because it checks all the boxes we have. So we are hoping to make this process a little bit more clear, consistent, a little bit more transparent. So if someone wants to start a new event, they have an entire packet to download, ordinances to lean on, and they know what they can and cannot do in Nacogdoches. That way, it helps us weed out some things that just aren't feasible in town and other ones that we easily accomplish. They could look at Nacogdoches and say, "This is a great fit, we're gonna move forward with it." And so we are hoping this will add to some transparency and also lighten the load on staff a bit, so we're not having meetings that we don't need to and we can focus on other things. So to start us off, we are gonna go over our proposed ordinance, which Jerry will present on, since he knows all the legal implications of these things.
Are you following a PowerPoint that we're supposed to be looking at?
I believe you all have a printed copy.
The packet is fine, I just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we should be on your third page, I believe, right now.
I got it. You kept looking down, I thought, well, maybe we're supposed to be looking.
The laptop's right there, so I'm looking at that one instead of in front of me.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jerry Baker, City Attorney. What I'm gonna go over is a proposed addition to Chapter 74 under our Code of Ordinances, which is, deals with our parks and recreation. This would add a new article, as you can see at the top, called "Special Events." So it should look like this, without the handwriting at the top. But that's kind of what I'm focusing on, to kind of go with there.
What page is it? I have nothing yet, no idea.
So look under, in that staple packet, I think there should be in the back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't have y'all's packet. Let me get it.
You got it.
Got it?
Yes.
Everybody on the same page?
Special events.
So yeah, it's page 29 and 51 at the bottom there.
At the back.
Clear? Okay.
Keep going.
Yep.
So as I go through this, again, this is a brand-new ordinance. We don't have anything in our ordinances right now related to special events. So I'm just gonna kind of go through and kind of summarize some of these particular sections as we go through the, this, or review this ordinance, or proposed ordinance. If at any time anyone has any questions or needs to clarify anything or anything we go over, please feel free to speak up and stop me, okay? So the first section that we're dealing with here is the definition section. So specifying, what do we mean when we're talking about city-owned property, for example? First Amendment activity. Special events, the one I point you to, because that's what we're here about, right? So as it's defined there, it means a temporary event gathering or activity, including but not limited to a parade, race, marathon, walk-a-thon, firework display, concert, carnival, or other similar type of event or festival, which involve one or more of the following activities. So just want to clarify that, that every one of these activities below it does not have to be met in order for it to constitute a special act, or a special event. Does that make sense? Going on to the next page. So here, you see in 82A is the general rule. It shall be unlawful for any person or entity to hold a special event, sponsor a special event, or otherwise cause a special event to be held without first having obtained a special event permit from the city, unless such activity is specifically exempted as specified below. So that's your general rule. Just pointing out the fact that if you're trying to put on a special event without going through the city first and it constitutes what we define as a special event, then that's a violation of the law. So those exceptions are outlined in subsection B there below. You're not gonna have to have a permit, and I really wanna emphasize First Amendment activity because that's probably, comes to mind a lot of times when we're thinking about parades or anything of that nature. But when I'm talking about an activity that's like a protest of some nature that's protected by the First Amendment, maybe it's held on a sidewalk, maybe it's held in a park. It doesn't involve any closure of roadways or any of that nature, but it's protected by the First Amendment. So it's allowed, it's not permitted. Does that make sense? It doesn't fall within that definition of a special event. Somebody would not have to go get a permit in order to engage in that activity. If it would require the closure of a road, for example, then we, it would fall into that permit section. Require. Does that make sense? And another one that I've highlighted here, when we talk about a little bit more private events under subsection five there, gatherings or activities of attendance of less than 100 people, unless such event or activity would require the closure of a public street. So like I mentioned with the First Amendment activity, if we're talking about a closure of a street, even if it's a private activity, you're gonna have to go through either a permanent process or this council may, make the decision, "We don't want to, we don't want this when it comes to city-owned property." That's yours decision to make, and we'll discuss that as we go further. But that does not fall within the definition of what a special event is. Make sense? Going forward. So the next section talks about what's required for the application. Subsection A, it must be timely filed, and we'll get into that a little bit later. And it sets forth the minimum information that's required, including who's the organizer or the sponsor, what are the proposed dates, kind of the description of what you're asking for, transportation plan, if you're gonna have alcoholic beverages, require another permit, et cetera, et cetera. I also point out under subsection A that it says there, any, if you're gonna use any sound equipment or amplification, amplification devices, it has to be shown and also have a permit. So right now, just to clarify, we don't have a permit for sound equipment. I'm gonna be bringing that in a future workshop to discuss. So, but we didn't want to omit it here and have to come back and bring it back to the council and discuss it at that point, because I just wanted y'all to be aware that that's coming forward. Likewise, under subsection nine, any kind of fireworks or anything, you might have to have a special permit for that. Under subsection 12, insurance certificates. You know, designated the city as the certificate holder and an additional insurer. And, you know, the requirements are that any kind of permit will not be issued under subsection B on the next page, until a completed application is submitted to the city. So it makes clear in the ordinance that if you fail to fill out a complete application, that's one basis for us to deny you the permit. So the next section discusses fees and costs, and we're gonna get into a big discussion of that towards the end of the presentation. So as you can see, there's a blank here. So we're, that's one of those things we're asking the council for direction for, about. Is, do we want to charge a fee? If we do what it is, how's it gonna be structured? We'll get into those discussions later and I'll skip over that part. I just want to point out that there's gonna be time periods in which those fees have to be paid under the ordinance, or that, that permit may be denied or revoked. And if then it's canceled, for example, but we've already, you know, performed some services and those services has cost the city some money, and, you know, with part of that fee, that's, you know, paying for some of those services. If those services already been performed, that part of the fee would not go, be returned or remitted back to that applicant if they canceled it then. And that's, they're canceling the event or we're revoking it because they failed to abide by something else. But we've already performed the services, we've already done the work, so we're not gonna repay them for those services that are performed. Does that make sense? Okay. So deadline under 74 slash 85. As you'll see there, under subsection B, that the special event permit will be issued only if the city manager or the manager's designee find that the requirements have been met. And that's, you know, as you can see there, under one through five, that essentially, everything that we're requiring is part of the application and to make sure that, you know, we're talking about all the laws and ordinances being met, that there's not gonna be any interference with safe and orderly movement of traffic or public uses of anything that will create a dangerous situation. You know, will not require diversion of a number of police officers that will create, create a dangerous situation for the city. You know, a concentration of people or animals that would, you know, particularly affect the city and that all the fees and licenses have been attained. If all those check marks, or all those boxes are marked and they performed all those things, then and only then will the city manager issue the permit. Sure. If it's on a, I mean, if it's First Amendment activity and it's not involving any kind of city services, there would not be any permit required. Now, if they cause any damage to the park, that's, that's a different matter. That's a different ordinance that's gonna be impacted or affected. You know, it, you know, they call damage. Right, but at the same time, you know, we can't go out there and require every, you know, party who's, I mean, we have, you know, allow people access to the park. We can't really deny them access to the park on that basis. Essentially, and that's something we can discuss if we need to add something to, potentially another type of part of our ordinance when it comes to the use of parks. I can tell you, there are, in the works, and Jessica maybe talk a little bit more about this, but we are working on kind of tweaking our policies when it comes to parks in particular and what activities can and cannot be done there. Does that answer your question? Any other questions?
Questions? And I'm always playing, not the devil, but devil's advocate. So let's say theoretically, you know, you think a kind of 100 people show up for a demonstration, something. They say they're gonna show up at the park. Next thing you know, it becomes 500 and 100 counter protesters, or like, whatever. Then you have to have, obviously, maybe a presence there. I think, before we're done with this, at what point would there be a trigger to say, "Okay, you should have gotten a, a permit because this was going to turn into something that was gonna have to have X number of officers at it, period."
Well, I mean, if it's something that reasonably should be perceived beforehand, we potentially could ask for that after the fact. But if, you know, if you'd have a bunch of counter protesters show up, you're not anticipating that. I mean, especially that kind of number. I mean, I don't know how you could factor that into trying to go after them for, you know, failing to meet their obligations under this special permit.
I just didn't know if you, if, under a certain scenario, could you disperse that and say, "If you're gonna do something of this magnitude, it's gonna have to be, you're gonna have to pull a permit next time," because you'd have to pull all of patrol, as an example.
You could potentially trigger some other ordinances, you know, and other policies, you know, or criminal trespass, those kind of things that may fall into, you know, come into that. You know, as I mentioned, we're talking about, or we will be bringing forward a noise ordinance, which we require, so if somebody shows up at a park with, you know, some sound amplification to try to drown out a bunch of counter protesters.
Which we've, well, we've even had people, obviously, show up at events with sound amplification.
And there's, there's some things that we can do, but again, we're talking about First Amendment activity. So we're, you know, the city is, doesn't have free reign when it comes to that. Now, if they get out of hand.
That's, that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm referring to. Like if the police presence isn't there to keep two groups away from each other, then, yeah.
That's not peaceful protest. And we can, you know, we have other statutes and rules and ordinances that can be, we can use to, you know, intercede at that point. Chief Kennedy could probably address that more than I could.
I'm only bringing it up since that's not the kind of things that happen here, but obviously, in other places, it has happened, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's always a danger when you have any kind of protest, especially in these times when, you know, there's kind of, there seems to be a segregating, segregating of sides and extreme views on both sides of the, on both sides of the aisle. So it's always a possibility. But what we're talking about here is essentially an anticipated event, a gathering, that, you know, that are gonna involve city services. You know, whether it's closing down a road or using, you know, police for security or whatever it may be, using art facilities or something like that. And we're essentially talking about parades, you know, Blueberry Festival, those kind of events is what we're focusing on in this particular ordinance. As I mentioned, other ordinances may be invoked for that kind of activity. But there's only so much you can do when it comes to First Amendment activity. And when it comes to... What's that?
A Blueberry Parade?
No, 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 no. No, no, I'm saying, that's what we're talking about today is a special event permitting process for special events like Blueberry. Or, or, you know, when you, you know, you're blocking off streets, you're, you know, you're closing down Main, you know, Main Street, you're closing down the square, you're, you're using city services, other city services, maybe there's fire, police, whatever. And so those are the kind of things we're talking about in this particular ordinance. But I was just pointing out that, you know, if it's First Amendment, it doesn't really fall into this category. Does that make sense?
And, and what my question was about was simply, if it's First Amendment but then defaults into something that is kind of a, another area where streets are getting closed, you're pulling all of patrol, then you're pulling those that are not on duty in, does it then become something else?
If streets are gonna be closed because of that First Amendment activity, then they have to get a permit.
That's, that's where I was going with it.
Any other questions before we go forward? Yeah, so we're gonna have amendments coming soon, I guess, to our, our parks' policies themselves to address situations. And, you know, we, we never hope or want those kind of things to happen in our, our city facilities, but we need to be prepared if and when they do. Okay? Any other questions about that before I go forward? Subsection C, just pointing out that no applicant is assured the ability to close a street. And that's made clear in the ordinance. That's not a promise, that's not a right to anybody. And it has to be permitted by this, this council or the chief police, if you've designated that authority to him. And that, you know, any special event permit applicant is gonna agree to indemnify the city. So should some kind of bad event happen, somebody gets injured, whatever, they're promising either through insurance or other things that we agree to, to reimburse the city or identify us and protect us, if we commit that, grant that permit. The next section talks about the denial and the basis for any denial. You know, if there's a conflict with another special event going on at the same time, that's a basis for denial. If there's a violation of city ordinance or other applicable state and federal laws, that's another basis for denial. So it could be that scenario that you're talking about. You know, failed to complete the application, engaged in a false or misleading statement or omission of fact in their application, they've been denied or revoked in the preceding 12 months. You know, failed to pay fees or provide proof of insurance. Those, those are all bases for denying the, the, the permit. And it, it does allow for alternatives to be presented to the applicant, but that's not a requirement for, for the city manager. The next section talks about revocation. So any one of these building officials, where we're talking about the police chief, fire chief, or city officials, excuse me, police chief, fire chief, building official, code enforcement officer, community service director, if there's any indication that the applicant is engaging in activity that would be in violation of this ordinance or any other ordinance or law, they can notify the city manager, and if it's necessary to revoke, he makes that decision. Okay? If what this ordinance does allow for is the opportunity for an appeal, for any decision, whether it's, we're talking about denial or revocation of the permit, and it lays out what that process is. It has to be timely filed, it has to be submitted to, within a certain period of time, to the city secretary in writing specifying the basis of what those appeal, that appeal is. And it gives the council the ability to say, you know, "We disagree with the city manager on this. We think it should go forward." Or, or agree and say, "Yeah, we're, we agree, we, we think you violated this, just like he said, and we're not gonna overturn his, his decision on that." What I will point out says that the city council is not required to call a special meeting to accommodate an appeal. So if somebody were to get their permit revoked right before the, the special event that they wanted, it doesn't mean that the city council has to call a special meeting at that time just so that they can have that, potentially have that special event. So it's, it's not a right. And the thing that I wanted to point out to you also, you should have in front of you, it's highlighted here. I apologize, oversight on my part, but I should have included that, that section in the ordinance. It's just a, a reference to our general penalty provision in our code ordinances, which is under Section 1-14. So if there's any violations, it's basically a $500 fine, and that fine is a daily fine. So if there's a key violations, each and every day there's a violation, that's a $500 penalty. Does that make sense? That's the kind of overview of the ordinance. Any questions? Okay?
Well, I would like to say that it's almost immaculate. We were visiting earlier, and, and he said he'd love to hear the word immaculate, and it really is. Except for, he said it is no longer immaculate because he had to add the yellow piece, or I would have...
You said almost.
Because he, because he had to add.
You said it was a mag, you said it was almost.
Right, because he said. No, no, it wasn't immaculate today, so anyway, thank you. That was a lot of work and a lot of research, and I know you're gonna add more, but really is a lot of work, and thank you really thorough.
I'm very glad Jerry had to do the legalese part of it, because I have written an ordinance that read, "Immaculate", I like that one. So do you all have your presentation in front of you on your screens now?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure, because I'm gonna reference those. So of course, I know this will have to come back to council for actual adoption of this ordinance. If the ordinance itself is adopted, we would then like to implement some procedures, guidelines, and some more stair steps that will come along with this process. So what we're looking at is implementing the guidelines, which we'll go through on our next slide. If those are approved and implemented, the city staff would start using a new software called Civic Optimize. I'm not normally quite such a tech nerd, but I'm very excited about this software. It's got a lot of bells and whistles on it, which I think will be very helpful on our staff side. For the user, it's just gonna look like a form they fill out that you can do on your cellphone, on your desktop. Should be very, very user-friendly. On the back end, it's gonna be very helpful for staff, because if you say, "I'm gonna have a 5K, all in Piccon Park, I don't need any trash cans, I just need an extra quart of potty that they're gonna rent themselves," it emails approximately three staff members. We can all say yes from our desk, because this is run-of-the-mill. And then that event organizer gets an approval and the permit relatively quickly, usually within two or three days, as long as all of our staff are in office. If it's something more complicated like Blueberry Festival, and they check, you know, "We need all these services, it's a multi-day event, street closures," it emails out to all of our city staff, this is all automated on the back end, and they can go through and they can approve Blueberry Festival happening, but also say, "We are going to require you to have a logistics meeting so we can make sure everyone is on the same page as far as safety, that we're getting all the information we need to do street closures." So it can require some additional steps, but will still be a lot easier to communicate with our users and make sure that the community knows what we need from them, and we reply to them in a timely manner. We really think this will simplify the application and approval process. Like I mentioned earlier, we've kind of reinvented the wheel, excuse me, excuse me, almost every time we've done these events. So we want something that's user-friendly on the front end. On the back end for staff, it automates a lot of these things, so that way we don't have to continue to have an event meeting every time there's a 5K in town, if we've done it 10 different times. But we can continue to have those logistics meetings where it's Blueberry Festival, Old Town Rig Down. Where we really do have to sit in a room and talk about, "How do you park 100 big rigs downtown and do it in a safe way where there's no property damage?" So we will continue to do those things, but focus on more logistics instead of smaller event approval. So in your proposed guidelines, which is approximately 14 pages long, we are very, very detail-oriented over at Community Services and with the help of all of our partner different departments. So your full packet is in your agenda, which we can go through it step by step if you like to, but I'll kind of hit the high points and then answer some questions. So in these proposed guidelines, we split events into four different categories. These are the ones we see... These are the ones we see very, very often, almost every event we have in Nacogdoches fits into these event categories. So we decided it was easier to kind of split them into categories rather than take them one at a time. So we have a small event, which would be less than 500 attendees, usually those are in the U around the CBB, in Festival Park, and some of our smaller event spaces. We have large events, which of course, Blueberry Festival, Old Town Rig Down, Wine Swirl, things like that, that usually require multiple street closures, extra city staff, a lot of city support. We have running events, which can be anything like 5K, 10K, half marathon, and then parades, because those are a horse of a different color. There's a lot of moving pieces with that, a lot of attendees in very close proximity to a lot of moving vehicles, a lot of street closures. So those are our four event categories. Also, there are additional permits and steps depending on what you want to do. If you want to have a 5K that ends with fireworks, we need some extra information to know what kind of fireworks you're shooting off, where you're gonna do it, do you have a license, have you hired someone with a license, hopefully. Same type of thing if you're wanting to consume or sell alcohol at your event, have that sound equipment, or close East Main, it requires a few extra steps. Our intent is not to have four or five different permits an event organizer would have to fill out, rather all those would kind of be lumped into one. If you say, yes, I'm gonna have fireworks, it pulls up four or five different questions and asks you to submit a few other documents. So that way it's kind of a one-stop shop and not, okay, you did this permit, now do this one and do the next one because that's cumbersome and we don't want to push people away from having events in Nacogdoches. In each one of these, we do have specific things we ask for. Most of the time it's their contact information, any streets that need to be closed, what times their events are gonna be loading in their vendors, what time they should be cleaned up, if they need any city staff. So we ask for all of those things upfront. And then like I mentioned on the backend, we may say, hey, it's kind of unclear where you want your street closed, we need some additional information. Also in your packet, there are many, many maps, and that is just for y'all to peruse at your leisure. Another thing that we have found that we do occasionally is every time there's a 5K, there's a bit of a different route. So we're, what we are proposing to do is have a set of standard 5K, 10K, parade route maps, and street closure maps. So hopefully when the publics have an event downtown, they can say, I want street closure map A, rather than us having to figure out every single time where the barricades go, because Public Works and Police Department have weighed in heavily on that, on this is the safest way to close down East Main from vehicle traffic and we have a lot of pedestrian. Of course, the public, if they say, I really want street closures, street closures in a different way, they're welcome to request that, but that would be based on if we have enough barricades, police presence, and can't allow for additional street closures. So we do ask for that. In the very last page of your event permitting packet, we do have this handy-dandy checklist, which I think is very, very helpful. On the left-hand side on your screen, we have it broken into two columns. One is kind of your event type, that's small, large, running, and parade, with a checklist of all the items that the city staff would need to start your event permit review process. On the right-hand side is kind of some of those special caveats, whether you're selling or consuming alcohol, having Main Street street closure, doing fireworks, or having sound equipment, and we would need all those things on that right-hand side as well. So if you are having a running event with fireworks, there's quite a few things we're gonna need from you upfront. Again, we don't want it to be cumbersome, but at the same time, we do need that information in order to make sure if you're shooting off fireworks near downtown, you're doing it in a safe manner with a licensed professional. And we have, for the permit due dates, there are a few different due dates on there. So if you were doing a running event with fireworks, because that's my favorite example, we would need all of your information 45 days in advance, and then all of the running information 90 days in advance. So you can see that may be a bit confusing, but it's just whichever timeframe is longer, because we need as much information as early as possible. So we have this checklist in the back. We're very much hoping this helps any event organizers, that they can flip that checklist and say, I'm gonna have a running event, here's all the documents I come up with, and you can submit it all at one time to the city. So that is what we hope to implement going forward if the ordinance is approved, and these would be the guidelines. Like I mentioned, this packet is roughly four, I think it's 14 pages long. I noticed this morning going through it, I didn't have page numbers, so that will be added to it. I'm very sorry, oh, it's 11 pages. So I'm very sorry about that. But really this packet, and it's the one I'm talking about, has the big red draft on it. Really we think it's going to be helpful to the public so they can understand what they can and cannot do in Nacogdoches, what the city can support. There are a few things in here that I'm sure perked up some ears earlier when Jerry mentioned it, as far as private events and fees, which we do have a little bit more discussion on that if y'all are open to those topics. But staff are hoping for some initial feedback on these guidelines, the ordinance, if this is something you all agree with, love it, if there's some tweaks we need to do, just kind of how we move this forward from here. And of course, I also have like my second question on there that we do need to discuss private events and then fees as well.
I have a question about, just because I live on a route where there's always 5Ks and 10Ks and stuff, and I know my neighbors live with this. One, they come and put signs in, in the yard, directions or whatever, and it seems like maybe if they would use the city right-of-way from the sidewalks, if that could be put in there. Maybe I'm getting in the weeds too much, but I know that when they put the signs in somebody's yard, that's a little bit weird, you know? And also, a lot of times like you have regulations in there for barricades, they have to be put up at this time and taken down at this time. But the problem is for the city workers is that they drop them off, say the 5Ks on Saturday, they drop them off on Thursday or Friday, and they end up having, they can't be put in the street, so they end up in the yard for Thursday, Friday, and then they're out Saturday, and then they're, they're put up in the, back in the yard Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday until they're picked up. So maybe they need the same requirements. You put them, you bring them out at four and put them up at four and take them down at whatever time. Maybe that could be put in there, because I know it is an inconvenience for homeowners that live there.
And that's certainly something we could talk with our Public Works Department about, because especially I know they are dropping the barricades, you know, on Friday before everybody goes home for the event on Saturday.
Right, and I understand, I don't want to put them to extra trouble, but.
We can certainly look into see if there's a, a solution for that, and especially for the, the signage, I think that's something we can easily put that, you know, any of your parade route or 5K route signs need to be located in the city right-of-way and then removed promptly at the end of the event.
Yeah.
So we can certainly do that, and I know our code enforcement does a great job of going around, and if they find signs, they pick them up, and we tend to.
So does my wife.
And we try to, if they're still out there and code enforcement picks it up and we know what event it is, I mean, we don't try to scold them, but we do remind them, you know, it is your responsibility to pick up your signs at the end of the event.
Well, I think if it's in the rules, maybe they'll understand, you know, so.
Because even especially Jerry did a wonderful job of, you know, we can refuse to let an event happen again the next year if, you know, they've left out every sign and trash, and they damaged a lot of stuff. So that can be something that we record at the end of each one, that, you know, this event had great intentions, but they violated so many of our permit guidelines, maybe it's not one we allow to reapply the next year. But we can certainly write that one in.
Yeah, that'd be good, because we end up picking up trash bottles and different stuff all along the route, you know? So maybe that could be encouraged also, is that you clean up behind yourself.
Jessica, what about, and I can't remember, because there's been other places in life, on deposits, like maybe a larger deposit that they don't get back if they don't clean it up?
We certainly can. Right now, how we have it written is that we are not requiring a deposit, but rather the city listed as an insured, as an additional insured on their policy. So it doesn't necessarily protect from if they don't clean up trash, but it does protect if, you know, some event's happening in Festival Park and they break all of our new electrical pedestals. Some of that was because of how the ordinance was written, and some was from other cities we talked to that they've gotten in a few fights over how much of the deposit was kept, or if damage was done above the deposit, they weren't able to recoup any additional money, they just got five hundred dollars. So we could look at a cleanup deposit or something of that nature.
Yeah, I think we, I think we did that in chemo, because you gotta remember, it wasn't huge and all that. But the event started getting, obviously, I mean, we had a 5K every, I mean, every week it seemed like, so, every other week. So at a point, you, you had to have some kind of clawback above the insurance to make sure they just police themselves out, pick up all the bandit signs and all the water cups that they would, I'm assuming it's that. But what I'm, I guess what I'm hearing is.
The good thing is that the bottles are water. It's not alcohol, you know, and they're not running and drinking at the same time, so.
Yeah, well, I was, I was. When, when you said animals, yeah, when you said animals and people, I was thinking about if, I know we have certain personal staffs not here, I was thinking the running of the bulls.
Can we have that?
I mean, with alcohol?
Running of the hogs or something.
Oh gee.
But there, there could be something as far as if there's litter left, where we may have a litter fine after an event if we know, you know, this is where a water station was for a 5K, and it's obvious, like this is all your trash that you just picked up and left. So we could look at maybe having fines or some sort of cleaning deposit or something of that nature. We just don't have that written in here currently.
I think just encouraging them to pick up after themselves would be good enough, probably, you know?
Well, there may be some mechanism, you're, you're, you're talking about a mechanism for getting the barricades, and that may just be, you know, maybe what, what can only Public Works do and what can the volunteers do? That may be able to, maybe the volunteers can do a little more, you know? Because you sure don't, we sure don't want to incur a ton more costs of having a lot of overtime to pick up things. I, I don't, I'm concerned about the costs on all this, so.
And as far as specific to the barricades, that is one of the ways that the city has kept the cost down, that Public Works has dropped off during the normal working hours. And then we tell especially the 5K, 10K runs that are early in the morning, either the police department, if they have spare time, they'll go and pull the barricades while they're on shift, or we tell, you know, all of the event organizers, you need to have some volunteers, because we'll have them staged there, but you are responsible for pulling them into the street where they go. So that's why we've kept a cost down, but there may be.
Maybe a card or something.
Yeah, there may be another way for us to do that, so we can certainly explore those things.
Do they ever think about having 5Ks and sharing it in all of the town in different areas, or is it just on the areas that they run now?
Sorry, I don't, I didn't catch the first part.
In other words, seems like all the 5Ks all run the same area, pretty much.
In front of his house.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm a one-issue person.
So we do have quite a few 5Ks. It's funny, in the last couple years, a lot of these 5Ks have partnered with their favorite businesses, whether it's the brewery, Texas size bling, commercial bank, and they tend to start in their parking lots or behind their stores and run specific routes. A lot of them have been downtown. We do have quite a few that run just in Pecan Park. We have some that are now trail runs. So we've seen, there's about three different patterns of 5Ks that we see, but there is kind of a, a downtown Washington Square route that is used pretty often.
Brad, look, look at it this way, when they plan it, they're like, there's only so many celebrities' houses we can run by. So that's part of the plan.
Well, and I'm asleep during their run, their run, so it's all good. I'm just asking questions to be difficult.
The Star Tours is next.
It has bins, not bins.
And actually, I miss them. People used to run by my house and I would sit out and wave.
I'll give them to you. Logan's port, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
That really does run in the back of Pecan Park. We could probably make that work. Are there any other questions or about the guidelines specifically, or the ordinance?
So about the guidelines and the ordinance, how does it, how do they apply to city-sponsored events?
So city-sponsored events are supposed to follow these same guidelines. We have a few city events, like the Wine Swirl event, where we have to submit the resolution to city council for approval of East Main, we ask Tech Stop for approval, we have officers that are on duty that patrol during the event, Public Works partners with us to pick up trash, we have volunteers that come out and put up the barricades. So city events are supposed to follow these same ordinances.
But that, that's our intent, is that whatever the city does, we will follow the same guidelines that we would require anyone else to do.
Yes. And I do want to point out, I didn't mention this early on, that these guidelines, for the people that have been doing events in Nacogdoches for quite a while, these are not necessarily new. This is just the first time in 20 years roughly that we've written them down and updated them. So anyone doing Blueberry Festival, Old Town Rig Down, none of this is gonna be a surprise to them, because we've been doing this in practice, we just haven't had it in the code, and we haven't had a handy-dandy little guideline for them.
Thank you.
So I have several questions. So I happened to be around in 2022 on the council, I may have been the only person who heard. And I know we had some discussion about the number of times we would close East Main Street. So are we thinking along the same lines that we would only, I think we said four times, that we would only close it four times, or back then?
Yeah, so I know there's always been some concern about the number of times East Main is closed specifically. We do have smaller downtown closures, whether it's Tobacco Doches, that's Commerce Alley and Church Street, we have the U behind the CBB that's closed pretty often. So in these guidelines, we don't have a specific number as far as, you know, you can only close it 10 times, but we did write in there that East Main would only be closed or us essentially bring a resolution to city council if it falls into that large event category or if it's a parade. And especially most of our parades, the only one that actually closes East Main for four hours is the Christmas Parade. The other ones close for about two hours. So as of right now, East Main is only closed for Blueberry Festival, Old Town Rig Down, the Christmas Parade, and Wine Swirl. Because we had years ago, Dia de los Muertos was on East Main. The library has chosen to move it to Festival Park, and the CBB U is just a better event space for them, and will be moving it solely to Festival Park. We've done so many improvements down there that it's a, a very easy one-stop shop for a lot of these events. So we didn't have an actual limit, it was just you had to be a large event or a parade for us to bring that resolution to council in these guidelines.
So we might, I'm, I'm thinking with these guidelines out there, and, you know, as our city, as our downtown actually grows and has different things, there may be more requests, and I'm thinking we may want to have some kind of limit to the number of times. I mean, that was requested by a number of people, some of the business owners, that, that, that we only close East Main a limited number of times. That's something to consider.
We can certainly look into writing that in there. The only direction I think staff would need from council is then, if we say, just for example, we're only gonna close it three times or five times, and all of a sudden, January 1, we have seven applications, is it first come, first served, or do we say it's these community events that are kind of grandfathered in and any new ones? We would just need some, some method for that.
So that comes to my second question, which is really, what, what are the events that really benefit the city? And, and I know you brought up some, I mean, you gave us some financial benefits for Wine Swirl, I think, can the Blue? Old Town Rig? Right, thanks.
In case anyone doesn't know, Ashley Morgan, Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So yeah, the, the two reports I provided are just the two largest events. I'm happy to provide the other ones by request, but I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare for this. But I was just saying, it can be a little bit subjective, because some businesses may benefit from Wine Swirl more than they do from the Blueberry Festival, and it all just kind of depends on the audience and things like that. So it's, it's kind of difficult to make those choices, and I, I do caution that about if we were to only approve for events that close East Main per year, because it's gonna come down to a lot of scrutiny, and y'all would make, have to make that difficult decision and potentially really upset a large amount of people.
So then the other possibility is that 10 people may request. And then what, how do we decide? I mean, do we say, oh yeah, all 10 of you can close Main Street? That, to me, to me, that's something that you might want to consider, is having a limit and saying that the, the judgment will be made based on the impact for the city of Nacogdoches, and you have some rough measures that you can use, I think, to justify yourselves. And then, that's something I wish you would consider to put in there. And then that gives us a right to say, I'm sorry, but, you know, Greer's has to be in business, and you're the 19th person who wants to close Main Street, you know? We have to watch out for our business owners and, and the people who, who actually support all of downtown, so. So that's one thing that I think we ought to consider, and, and you can have a criteria, we can, I'm, I'm sure Jerry has it in his brain right now. He's already thinking of the criteria, I can see it.
I think you have some of those in your presentation, don't you?
Yeah, as far as economic impact and things, yes. But then also in the guidelines, like I mentioned, unless you are a large event and you're having over 500 people, and you don't have so much of a footprint, or unless you're a parade that's gonna shut East Main for two hours, which is a minimal traffic impact, those are the only ones that we would even bring that petition to city council for that resolution.
Right, right.
So we can absolutely put in something like, anything over in-road closures or whatever per year would come to council for consideration, or have some other metric in there. I honestly don't anticipate a lot of those happening, just because over the years, even our East Main closure has gone down dramatically. There have been a lot of events that, with Festival Park. Um, there have been a lot of events that with Festival Park, having so much money pumped into it and, um, having new RV pedestals and water that's made it a lot easier to have an event in Festival Park.
So, but I would encourage you to have it a minimal one and then they can follow the same appeal guidelines. You know, they can always come back and say, you know, we're the, we're number five and we'd like to appeal it and, you know, could say. And then that gives you some backing when you say, wait a minute, why don't you move it and go to this other area? Even if it's five hundred people.
Can I ask the mayor a question? You have a business downtown. How do you get affected by all these festivals and stuff? How's your business affected by it? Or is it, how many festivals do you want?
I close when there's a festival because, uh, my business is different. It's not.
You're not going to sell couches?
Yeah, and, and you've got people that, that it's a hundred and ten outside and you've got a three thousand dollar sofa sitting in there.
Ooh.
And they come in and lay down on it, you know? And, you know, and then if you see anything about it, you know, well, you're rude. So I just close.
Do you lose money on those days?
Well, yeah. That's a missed opportunity, but I, I am not going to, I, I am, I'm a team player. If you look at Old Town Rig Down, they, they gave us, this city of Nacogdoches, half million dollars last year. And that's a lot of money. They gave us a quarter of a million. They've done that as long as they've done it. And then they put a two hundred thousand dollar concession stand in there that, that that baseball association had been needing for fifteen years and nobody wanted to do it, you know? And Troy Massey and Abby said, we'll pay for everything, you know? Now, uh, the, the blueberry festival has been around a long time. The blueberry festival brings a lot of money into this town. Brings a lot of people into this town and they get to, we get to showcase our town. So there is revenue that the city draws off the blueberry festival. But the Chamber of Commerce, that's their largest fundraiser. If they didn't have the blueberry festival, there probably wouldn't be a Chamber of Commerce because they certainly couldn't support it from their membership dues. So that, that's a question I answered, but I'm, I'm going to go along with whatever. And it, and then if it becomes a problem, then I'll close down and you'll have nine empty buildings downtown.
Well.
We don't want that.
Actually, the reason I'm asking that is because I think the city's growing. It's going to grow big time.
It is.
And we're going to face those kind of issues and we might as well answer some of them now or at least talk about it.
It's not going to affect like, you know, when LA Electric goes in, they don't work on Saturday, you know? But retail works on Saturday and, and you're exactly right. It just depends on the store, you know? Uh, Kathleen mentioned one store, Greers. I mean, she does the same thing. I mean, it, it's, 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 it's a loser. I mean, it, it, it doesn't work, but, but then on the other hand, you've got the popcorn store, you've got Dolly's, you've got, there's more that win than lose, so you just shut up, you know?
And that was to me, right?
Been down here sixty something years and so just, you know, be supportive of everything. Be appreciative, especially from the Massey Foundation because I mean, that's, that's, that, they have done, they give back to the city because they love the city, you know? And, um, a lot of people enjoy the blueberry festival, especially from about eight o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock in the morning. It is so hot, you can't even stand it because that, those brick streets are just like an oven. When that sun hits it, I mean, it's just like the thermostat keeps going up and up and up and up and up and up. And then they get sweaty and then they come in my store.
And I will say as far as the street closures, I feel like we've hit a bit of a stride, which has been good. Um, cause we've had things like Tobacco Doches that they use that Commerce Alley because the cigar store has their, um, back entrance there. And funny enough, we had Church Street, that they're always kind of this weird middleman between the Hotel Fredonia area and downtown that they came to us and said, can you close down Church Street so people will walk over here and shop in our stores and we can be part of the event? Um, so we've had a lot of events that have really figured out where they fit, but then there are some, like Blueberry Festival and Wine Swirl and the Christmas Parade, we are going to have to close down East Main.
Right, right.
Either because we're driving a parade down it or just we have too many pedestrians and people are shopping. Some stores, that's their biggest night of the year. Other stores, um, more of the furniture, you know, we have some businesses downtown. They're going to close because that's not necessarily.
Well, Wine Swirl is, is at night and so I, I'm gone anyway, so, um, then.
Well, the rea- I, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I, I, I think prior to two thousand twenty-two, I think there had been more events and more closures. And it may be because we closed it for smaller events. I'm, and so maybe you took care of it by, by saying you'll only consider it at this. I'm just saying, give yourself a cap. Go look in and, and think it through and then give yourself a way to say, wait, this is too many. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, as with, with these ordinances and guidelines, everything, I think we ought to, to, to go into it with the expectation that we're going to evaluate this and maybe a year from now, come back and say, you know, this part is not working. Or we need to tweak this part. Um, and that may be what you're talking about here. Maybe we're saying, we're seeing a lot more applications for closing down Main Street and we're like, this has become too much for these businesses, so it's, it's having detrimental effects. We need to come back and, and reevaluate. I think we just want to get something, you know, take, kind of take a first step, you know, maybe essentially with the, with this process right now. And then, you know, let's come back in a year and say, does this work? And, and we might have another workshop like this and say, you know, we need to, we need to look, relook at this part. And, uh, you know, I think that's, and that's a good thing to do with all of our ordinances and policies and guidelines as we evaluate those over time.
So to me, it seems like if we're going to consider limits as we move forward, it would probably benefit us to know what the data is on closures before we institute this ordinance and after. And that way we ha- like you're saying, we can come and evaluate and see if there are changes. Are we getting more requests for cha- for closures of specific streets? How is that happening? I think we can let the data drive us in a particular direction as we move forward.
I, I, I will say this. It, in the next, between one and three years, downtown Nacogdoches is going to change considerably.
Right.
And you don't know what kind of impact it's going to have yet. I mean, so there's some unknowns out there that, that, uh, i- if, if, if buildings get occupied that haven't, haven't been occupied in, in quite some time, some of them years, you know? There, there's going to be a big impact on this town, so. Anyway, that's, that's all I got to say.
Can I ask how the police and the city workers feel about any of this stuff? Do you guys have any opinions that, I mean, that you're sitting there maybe going, well, this is not right or it is right or?
I can tell you.
Well, I want a policeman to tell me. I want Bill to tell me.
And I will mention while Bill's coming up here, that, um, these guidelines have been reviewed as well as the presentation ordinance by all of our, um, staff that regularly review these event permits.
Mayor, Council, Assistant Chief Bill Kennedy, Nacogdoches Police Department. On most of the specific points that you're discussing, we don't have a strong opinion really either direction. Uh, but obviously the larger event, the larger it taps our resources. But we've been doing this, especially some of us for such a long period of time.
Yeah.
But we kind of have it down.
Okay.
Um, we work very closely with the other city departments in working through anything new or unique that comes up and we find ways to, to work through it. So as we're working through these guidelines, we're going to see some of the things that, uh, that Jerry spoke about where we kind of thought this was a good idea. But let's tailor that a little bit and I think our only ask is, we need some flexibility because we are going to see some variance that we've never seen before. So we don't want to lock ourselves into a really hard and fast set of guidelines that in, in the event we can't adjust to.
And do you have that flexibility in this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, perfect, that's all.
I think, I think most of it's in there. Uh, we talked about some offline stuff that we're going to work through, but it's nothing that we can't.
That's all I wanted to know. You guys were happy.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Nope.
So.
Case is going to come up. Good.
Mine's real brief. I just wanted to, just on the public work side, you know, we've got the capacity to do it as we're doing it right now. It's really all about, I mean, we're short staffed, but everybody is. Um, so being able to just do it, um, we do have manpower, uh, just concerns in general. But, you know, it's operated fairly well as it's been going. Uh, overtime and stuff like that's a factor, but, uh, y'all talk about fees and stuff in a little while, I guess. But really for us, it's just about, you know, having the people available to do what, you know, is asked.
Well, and, and, and I'm not trying to put additional burdens on you. I just want to know that everybody's on the same page here.
And I think we're, I think we're happy to help as we need to.
Okay, thank you.
And to the, to the point about the signs, I, I didn't want to interject, but since I'm already standing up here. Um, I'd say, you know, yeah, definitely put signs in right away. Uh, on some streets, especially older streets like North Street even, uh, right away lines kind of at the back of the curb. But, um, I'd say, you know, it's probably prudent to at least touch base with property owners for permission if, if signs are needed.
That would be amazing if they just even.
On private property, say if right away doesn't exist, to put a sign in, but.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Case.
So, so the next, so that was my first thing, just because I happened to be around in twenty twenty-two and that was a big question. So my next packet of questions is when we, whether it's a private event or a public event, um, is there some way that we can, that we can ask them to touch base with the business owners or the, you know, say it's my neighborhood or say it's whatever, to, to find out what impact we're going to have on, on them, you know, to make sure that they've checked in some way? Like for example, if they close Commerce Street, you know, make sure that that's okay with the people down the, down the street or, I don't know. Are you, uh-oh, are you, Rick, are you, you're frowning. I don't think the city staff should do it.
I don't, I can't, I can't see him from here.
It would just be on weekends at night.
Are, are you asking me if, you said, if we have the Irish National Rugby Team and the running of the bulls is going to happen on Logan's Port, should we knock on doors first?
Yeah, right. I mean, I, ask me if I want the Irish and I'll tell you absolutely not.
Oh, that's what I thought you were going to say. Okay.
So maybe some, right, you know, throw in a few Italians there too and we'll just have a big, you know? You, all, all the police will be invited actually, so. Um, seriously, that, I, I'm just thinking of, you know, like even some of the back streets that we think are not going to affect anybody and yet those are the, the back streets are the ones that businesses actually put, you know, you know, have, have all their equipment or supplies come in on or, I, I, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but it seems like some kind of checking with the others.
Is that, is that a place where we could leverage the NACWIS system?
We could, um, it is, a lot of that depends on who has signed up for NACWIS or not. Um, so of course, if we're saying there's going to be an event on Commerce Alley and we want to tell people about that, as long as people that have businesses on Commerce Alley are signed up, then yes, that would be effective. As far as, um, asking the, the permission or kind of the opinions of surrounding property owners, um, I don't know the method we could do that. I know that, um, currently if we're going to have any kind of street closure, anything like that, the city does put up no parking signs, but.
But we could, I think what we could do, even if it's not asking opinions, I think what you could be more like with our process with zoning or other notifications within a radius that something's going to happen.
Yeah.
But then events going to happen.
Well, but, I mean, hopefully before it's allowed to happen, you'd want to know, I mean.
Well, I, I'll let, I'm going to let Mike, he, he's got some experience dealing with this already.
And, and I'm throwing this out as an option, it wasn't something presented, but it's part of discussion. So we have an established process for zoning change requests. Two hundred foot property owner, partners within two hundred feet of a subject property would be notified by city letter or postcard. We do postcards for five hundred feet as a courtesy, but by ordinance required two hundred feet. So we do letter notifications to advise them of when the meeting dates for the particular discussions of an item come forward. Usually that's beyond two weeks, between two, four, six weeks in advance. Um, in this case, it would probably apply to street closures because that would require council, um, authority. And so we could follow a similar procedure there where two hundred foot radius notification we have. And we could work with, with Parks and Recreation Department on that process. Anything beyond that, um, may require some additional discussion on, on what that would look like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really thinking of street closures. I'm not thinking of anything else, but.
We can certainly look into that, um.
I don't want to add more work to the staff. I'm trying to, the event organizer, I would like to have them have responsibility, but if it's easier to, for us to send out a postcard or something, I, I'm just.
I mean, if, if.
I'm just asking a broad question.
Let's say we use the notification, a similar notification and that had to occur thirty days before.
Yeah.
And then the, the actual permit, see the problem is, I think that y'all have logistically, is they have to, they've got a schedule. So you'd have to, part of this is walking it back. PD's got a schedule, their shifts are overtime, public works, everybody. So however it would be, if there's a notification and then if folks do want to show up the day that that permit is up for some kind of actual council final approval and voice their displeasure, there'd still need to be enough lead time to pull the trigger or not on all the different shops that have to be involved and that's kind of hard for, would that be kind of difficult for y'all to?
Although, and as far as, um, as far as a permit coming to city council where a citizen would have their chance to say, we don't like it, we don't currently have that written in the process.
Yeah, so if, if that was in the process, you could have, I mean, you could have an event that's going to have twenty thousand people here and two people show up. And then it, I, I would just think through that. That's what, that's the only reason I said now, if you'd say courtesy notification that I'm writing a bull down Logan's Fort or something, then that's, that's.
I would like to see that. Um, but, but really, let's just take an example, say the hospital. Um, in order to, to, you know, help the hospital get more funds, they decide to have a big picnic and, and they're going to close off some area around the hospital. And, um, and they're going to come to you. How would that work? And would people around be notified that they're going to close off, you know?
As of right now, if just Memorial Hospital, for example, if they said, we're going to have a picnic and we're closing down Mound Street, they of course would go through the, the permit process, um, fill out all of the necessary information. Um, then it would go to our city staff and if they said it met these requirements, they get an approval and then we put out the barricades at the assigned time. But there's not a notification to neighboring businesses unless, um, when we put out those street closure signs. Um, if it's a certain area that it's easy to mark, we do put street closure signs on telephone poles, things like that, saying this street will be closed Saturday at six AM or Sunday at two PM or whatever it happens to be. So there are signs put up, but not a notification sent out to every single property owner around there. Um, so we don't necessarily ask for permission or do advance notice other than those, um, physical signs.
So I'm trying to think of the things that are going to be problems. That's what I, you know, when we're doing or codifying it and. So I, 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 I think that is something you might want to think about tomorrow. I mean, closing down streets, a big deal.
And I do think something, um, like Mr. Hugby said, as far as using NACWIS could be a, a very cost effective and minimal effort on staff's side. If it was something where we went to additional neighborhood meetings or postcards, things like that, there are budget and staff time implications on those things.
That would be impossible.
I, I think it would be a lot to pick up because we have roughly sixty events at least we review every year. Um, and some of them are in a park and they require one road closure that two people live on. So there are some that are much smaller.
So my thinking is not after the, not afterwards. I mean, people hit a road closure, they've, they got to go around anyway. Mine is as you're, as we grow and as the downtown and all these things start happening, are there things that you want to be able to say, I, we don't want to make this choice right now because you're closing Mound Street? Mound is a huge thoroughfare, you know, we, and, but it's not twenty-one and you don't have to get extra, I mean, do, do we want just automatically or do we want to say, wait a minute, we, we, there are some, you know, streets that we really don't want to have street closures on?
And that is something, when it comes through on the backend, and I should have mentioned that, if it's a, a typical street closure, we do all the time, police and fire have already vetted those things and said, this is not going to impact traffic patterns as much or emergency response. Um, if it was a new street closure that we really haven't closed before, on the backend through our system, it goes to police and fire. traffic patterns as much, or emergency response. Um, if it was a new street closure that we really haven't closed before, on the backend through our system, it goes to police and fire for them to look at and say, hey, this is not gonna work. This is the only street leading to this neighborhood.
So you catch it over there.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So there is that.
But Logan's Fort Street, they wouldn't. You know, if Philip decides to throw the, you know, the big fundraiser on our street, and, right?
But yes, so we could, we could certainly look at a way to better inform our citizens when those road closures coming up, just so we don't impact their travel, or they know that, you know, at the end of this week, you won't be able to take this street.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the permission pro- process upfront. I mean, I know you're thinking about the other thing, but I'm thinking about people's, how they might be impacted by somebody else wanting to close their street.
And we can certainly look into methods for that.
Well, look, the only thing I'll say, and I realize we're not obviously Galston or Kima, I think there was, we tried to look at the dates. Let me just use Kima. At that time, we did try to look at the dates and how many, but it was, and I'm not saying it was entirely that, but if you wanted to keep your taxes down at what they were at, because I think when I left, it were like twenty-four cents per hundred because of the amount of sales tax. So there, there are some positive economic impacts with some of these events, then there's some that if you, if you have too many of them, they can be a drain, and you're not fully, uh, capturing your cost recovery. I would think, kind of to answer your question, you've got a balance, and this is where I say, this is where the balance comes in, you know. I realized that the motorcycle rally in Galston does a lot of, I mean, pulls in a lot of money. That being said, there's also a lot of disruption. I mean, a lot of locals, back when I was one, you know, you'd leave for three days, because I didn't have the temperament. Um, so, just saying, I mean, so there is a balance. It's not just about money. But if we end up with more down the road, and there's picking and choosing, then you start looking at ROI. You know, is it worth doing this? Is it, is it enough of a positive versus, but I would think that you might want to evolve that over, a little bit over time, and not maybe pull everything back and make it too onerous too quickly, because just kind of how that might shock the, the system here. But it doesn't mean we can't add more to it, like five hundred dollar deposits, or push out a, push out notification as early steps to try to make it a little bit, a little bit more method to the madness.
What I'm understanding is you're trying to streamline it to help.
Yes, sir.
And I like what you said, is that we don't know all the answers, and we'll tweak it later on if we need to, so I think it's great.
Are there any other questions about the guidelines? Because then I have two big questions for y'all. So one of the items in here is, um, private events. Um, if you'll go to page two in your special event packet, there is some wording under event permit process. Um, and the reason we put this wording in here is because one of the last events we dealt with, um, that came to city council was a private event, um, a road closure for a wedding. Um, so we didn't want to not address private events in here, but I don't think this is a perfect process that I have listed. Um, so as of right now, um, in order to close a street for a truly private event, and when I say private, it's not necessarily ticketed, it's more a wedding, um, a bar mitzvah, some, or a concert in a park, where you are selling a ticket, and then expected to stop access to that public area, um, or it's kind of an invitation-only, um, thing like that. So that's what I mean when I mean, uh, private event. Um, so right now, we have it written in here that any private event, like the wedding, um, council recently approved, would have to come to city council for approval. Um, we have it written in there like that, just because that was the last process we followed. Um, so my question to council is, how would you all like to handle private events? Because there are a couple of different ways to do it. Um, right now, with the transportation code, all of the private events would come to you all to review, say yes or no. Um, city council can designate, um, the city manager or other staff to say whether or not private events can happen on public property, or city council, of course, can also say, we are not interested in doing truly private events on public property, since they don't have that economic impact. Um, it could potentially be a lot of impact on staff, if everyone wants to start having their eighth grade dance downtown, or their private weddings, things like that. Um, and so that, that, um, wording in this permit application is not perfect, and so I'm looking for some guidance on what all you would like to do with private events. On page two, so it's in this.
Page nineteen.
Oh, sorry, page two of mine.
It's right under here.
Yes, nineteen.
Nineteen.
So, I mean, one, one, um, um, one thing I think we have to consider is, I really do not think that any private event should incur costs for the city that aren't paid by the event. I mean, just, I mean, that's a simple policy to have across the board. Um, otherwise, people will say, well, wait a minute, why did you cover the cost of, of the police for this event, and you didn't cover it for this event, or whatever. I don't think we should lose money, you know, on anything. Um, and I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I, I don't think we are, the city council is in the position of judging each of these private events, you know. It should definitely go through some other process before, uh, and we can be an appeal, but that, it, there's a, already a process. You've got you all, the city manager, everybody else involved, and I think we should be, if we consider them at all, I think we should be at the tail end, because we don't have all the data, and we don't have all the variables, and we don't have all the, and we don't know the pros and cons of it, so those are two things.
I tell you, why don't we do this? We've already committed to one.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just put this on pause, this, these private events, until we see how that, that one goes?
Well, isn't there another one already requested?
So there is, um, one that was approved, um, for the Marshall Kingdom wedding, that's gonna be in front of Roma's. Um, we did have another event organizer that came and asked quite a few questions about some private events, but has not booked anything. Um, the specific question was, can we have a concert in Festival Park and have it be ticketed? And if you do not have a ticket to go see this concert, we are gonna deny you access to Festival Park. And we had said, I don't even know if we can do that. And as of right now, with how our ordinance stands, and how the Texas Transportation Code is, they would have to come to you all, just because we don't have another process in praise, in place. So that was at least talked to our, like, the event organizer came and talked to our staff, but hasn't filled out any, um, permits or any requests as of today.
You think we ought to pause it, Jerry, or, or make a decision?
Well, any guy, um, any guidance we can have is from staff perspective would be great. I mean, where, where are y'all leaning on that? Because, um, we, we do, we just need some direction one way or the other. Um, we, we could talk about this also. One, one thing Jessica didn't mention is, we could talk about this in relation to the fee, uh, section.
Yes, and that is one thing that, um.
That's a possibility.
Yes, and we did talk to the Main Street Board about this as well, and they were of the opinion of, if we are having private events that are using public streets or public parks, and trying to not deny access and using these as like a venue for a wedding, then they should pay venue prices. Um, because they are not renting, um, you know, the Zion Hill Church or anything else that may cost them a thousand dollars. Instead, they are paying police overtime for two hours, and nothing for the street closure, and they're getting out very cheap. Um, so that was the opinion of the Main Street Board when we brought this to them.
That may be an option to address these.
Well, I, I don't think a private event should be held, especially during business hours, for any business, because there's, there's no economic advantage to that business whatsoever. That private event is there for that particular venue, period. They're not gonna get, somebody come in and buy popcorn, or, or pick up something at House of Traditions or anywhere else.
And to, and to address something that Jessica brought up, I don't know that there's any way we could limit someone walking through their private event.
Right.
Because it's in a public place.
Yeah, and, and, well, the other thing is, you've got the downtown study, which is gonna look at, could you have a, a, a venue, which would be sports-related, SFA, which could, could it be flexed for concerts and things like that? And then you would have an appropriate process on either having a promoter, and you'd have, obviously, built-in gated access to it, even though it's a sports facility, it would fit in a park. We have baseball facilities in parks right now. But that's a whole different animal than saying, okay, I'm gonna go and rent the whole park for how much? Fifty dollars. Because typically, what you would do, let's say that's a joint, we had a joint facility that was SFA slash city, and we wanted to see seasonal concerts there, and, when there's not sporting events. Yes, it'd be a public facility, but we would probably go through an RFI or RFP process, seek a promoter, you know, kind of bracket size of events and things like that, and they could be city or city-sponsored events, or SFA quasi-sponsored events. That's a different animal than, again, because let me guess, you would also probably have to block streets, and police, and everything that comes with it, and then also deny access at certain points where you don't have, you don't really have a physical space to do that properly. So, to me, that, that would be taking it to the illogical conclusion. Again, we're not against those type of things, but in the right context, at the right time. Now, rig down is a whole different, that's a different animal, too.
Well, I think we're wading into a mess where, oh, I want to do something, and you turn me down, but you said yes to the other person. What's the deal? You know, I, I'd rather put that off on your shoulders and let you deal with that. What do you think about that?
I think the, the community rather hear you saying than me.
And I will mention one concern that I may ask Chief Kennedy, I'll speak to in a second. Um, when I was talking to Chief Williams, there was a concern about private events, because we would, pretty much every private event, if we were gonna try to deny access to a public place, would require quite a bit of police presence, and I don't know if we have the staffing or the budget to maintain that. He knows I was gonna call on him. I'm gonna make him want to talk about the impact of what that was.
Yeah, strictly from a security perspective, open-air private events are a nightmare that we are not equipped to do with. We don't have the security infrastructure in our downtown spaces, whether it's city streets or even Festival Park. We simply do not have the resources to be able to properly secure those venues. It's just not something we can do right now. But I'm, I'm sure you're all familiar with what happened in New Orleans on New Year's Eve, those kinds of things. It's difficult enough for us to secure what we have with all of the resources, with our dump trucks and our fire trucks. When we start, when we start doing that in multiple different spaces from multiple different angles, we don't have the resources.
And that, I think that's our answer, that we shouldn't be doing private events, like you said.
I'm, I'm great with that. I'm.
We're, we're already committed to one, though.
Well, we all make mistakes, but, you know?
Just that one.
If it is something council's interested in, we can sit down and we can space out what that would look like over time, but it's gonna be a very significant investment.
No, no, I'm, I'm totally happy with no, uh, uh, no private events that have street closures is what we're talking about, right? Or, or is it pri- I don't understand the.
So if it's probably meant it doesn't involve any street closure or anything, it wouldn't fall into this.
Right, 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 right.
Can I bring up a special concern?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Good, I'm, I'm happy with this.
So, um, previously in the past, and this was especially, uh, common after, we kind of reopened after the pandemic. Um, for example, NHS had their prom on the square behind the CBB. That did involve a street closure, um, but they provided their own security, and I think very little security was needed. And, um, we've also used that for similar, like, when we've had conferences come into town, they kind of, um, they want like a s- a social, or a soray, or something like that. We haven't had one of these in a long time, so, I mean, I'm hoping that this is a moot point anyways, but I do think that it at least needs to be a part of the conversation, because we have used that to market Nakadoshas as a meeting destination before. Um, just that we're able to offer creative solutions, like closing the back street of Pillar, so.
And I think that could fall into a city-sponsored small event, if it's something where the CBB is a partner, and we have.
Right, like I'm the one who puts out the barricades, and I'm the one who cleans up the trash afterwards.
And I think also, we're not in that sense, we wouldn't be denying access to the general public, because they can still walk around, they can still shop.
Yeah.
Um, most of those are after five.
Right.
Um, and city, no one's here, it's a call, I'll have to lock, lock on Friday.
That's kind of what I would, wanted to focus on, is maybe, you know, outside of business hours, like you said, I felt like that was an important component.
I think what we're focusing on is like, a private citizen asking for use of a street.
For sure.
For something like this, rather than a city-sponsored event.
Yeah, no, but I think it just needed to be said, so that when somebody comes and says, well, why did you let Ashley do it? Because Ashley is bringing a, a conference into town, or something like that.
Ashley's nicer.
About the city, you know, it's, it's our, it's our street, isn't it? And what we do with that is different than what we allow someone outside of the city to do.
Well, I'm, I'm much happier.
And there was one thing, um, Jerry also.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just one quick point on something she brought up, just so you're aware, we are generally opposed to private security on city property. We have no influence over who that is, or what their skill sets are. They have no investment in the property. Our staff do. If we're gonna outsource security, we would be the ones that would prefer to do it, because we know who we're outsourcing it to. Uh, we can vet those people, we can't vet private security companies. We have no idea who they are, or what their investment is, and stuff, so.
And quality assurance really goes out the window at that point.
Well, and ultimately, if something happens at the event, they're gonna get us anyway.
There you go. You, you gotta come clean it up.
So I think Chief Kennedy made a good point about how we, we secure our infrastr- how we secure downtown. I think it's something we need to consider as we, as we move forward. I know that the Police Department and Public Works do a great job of protecting the big events that we have, but I, I think as we consider putting in guidelines that we also need to consider, is the infrastructure there to protect pedestrians in these events, especially the big public ones? So I, I know that's a con- a concern we all share, so I want to say, let's do that. Let's start that process, and I know y'all are already doing it, so thank you.
And I will, um, on that note, mention that that's why we have some of those, you know, pre-planned street closures, because we know how to properly close those, where we can fit a garbage truck, fire truck, where our permanent bollards are that lock into the actual streets, because we've drilled holes in them, so that's one of the reasons we're gonna try to really, really encourage our community to use these ones we've set out, um, not because we think we know best, but because we're trying to keep everybody safe.
And long t- and long term, if we've, if we do have a venue, that's a sports venue where we can drop bollards in when they have things, walking from a structured facility straight over, and it's, you've, it's fenced, it's got all, ticketing, everything, that will make their job easier to plan around those events, too, as well as the ingress and egress, and, and maybe even directing traffic out of a garage when it closes. I mean, when the event's over. So, yes, the bigger we get, we're gonna have to have more formalization of this, and for obvious reasons that both y'all have mentioned.
And so we will reword this private event to say that we are not doing private-sponsored events. Um, I do want to mention that, um, this, in case anybody.
Yes.
Watches this and flips out, um, this is not gonna stop people from renting a park pavilion for their child's fifth birthday. Um, they can still do that. It does not require any city services. We don't shut down streets. They are using the trashcans that are there. So we can still have those types of private events, because they are renting a park pavilion. Um, we're also gonna have events like Wine Swirl that are ticketed, but that ticket gets you samples of wine and food. It doesn't allow you access to downtown. Anybody can come downtown.
Jessica, I, I would, I would still, since we committed, and like Brad said, we might have made a mistake, but we committed. So I, I want those people, it's a very special occasion for them, accommodate them, do everything that we can to, I don't want it to be a nightmare for them, you know, so.
As far as they hang on Marshall?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This will not be retroactive. Um, their event, we already have street closure plans pulled up. They have contacted the Police Department, filled out everything we need, so this will not impact. This would just be going forward.
Have we answered your question?
For the private events, yes, sir. Um, my one last question.
Have we answered any thoughts, concerns, or questions?
We got that one.
Okay.
Um, but the last one is, does council want to explore some sort of event fee structure?
Yes.
Okay, then I have more slides. I'm very sorry about that. So essentially, I'm gonna, I'll try to go through this quickly. Um, I'm gonna show y'all a few current expenses on the city side from a few events, um, some research we've seen from our peer cities that are very similar to Nakadoshas in makeup, location, um, having a university nearby, um, and then some questions about some guidance that we'll bring back to you all. Um, so this is a document that we prepare every year for the Chamber of Commerce, um, that shows what our city staff, and this is purely staff hours, um, what the city pays into Blueberry Festival. Um, I'm not picking on them, this is just, they ask us for this report every year, so I have these numbers readily available. Um, so each year, we spend usually between eleven and twenty thousand dollars of staff time, over and above what our staff is normally doing, either mowing, or getting property ready, um, putting out extra trash receptacles, extra electrical, um, to prep for some of these events. Um, Bluegrass Festival, we spend a little bit less. Um, that number will go up this next year, because they are no longer an event with the Blueberry Festival, so they are standalone, which will need a whole, um, new prep. Um, so the city does have significant investment in a lot of these events. Um, I do want to, um, preface this with the city, with these fees, um, proposed, and what we're gonna talk about tonight. I'm not necessarily trying to recoup twenty thousand dollars from the Blueberry Festival. Um, that's not our goal. Um, we don't necessarily want twenty thousand dollars back from the Chamber of Commerce, because that's unsustainable for them, and we don't want to cripple one of our partners, um, in the city. Uh, but what. Uh, but what we are looking for is, you know, the city puts in quite a bit of man hours and money into these events, so maybe there is something. You know, a base event fee that then we could put more towards more litter pickup in town or new bollards or paying for this event software.
Can I ask Ashley a question? Ashley, you gave us this, this handout right here. Okay, how, how much money did, did the Blueberry generate?
Two hundred eighty-two thousand.
Um, so that, that can be kind of, yeah. Technically, according to this formula, which is provided by a company, um, called Tourism Economics. Um, it generated about two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That is like spread out amongst hotels, restaurants, retail. Um, that's like the impact to the town. However, um, direct tax receipts, um, which is, you know, money to the city is about nine thousand dollars. And six hundred and eighty.
So, so we had to spend. Twenty-one thousand to get nine back.
If you're only looking at the city putting in instead of getting back, yes. If you're looking at the impact to the businesses, then it's that two hundred and eighty-two thousand number.
How much does the co- uh, the commerce, I mean, how much do they ca- does it cost them and how much do they make?
Put on the, the.
And how much do they make?
I, I don't have those numbers, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, they, they get a lot of sponsorships and then they charge, um, like booth rental fees. Um, so I mean, it's pretty much profit.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if, if they're pocketing a lot of money, do they need to pay a little bit to get?
That's the age old question.
Yeah, I'm old.
I, it's a question that's been asked many times and I think at the end of the day, eh, you know, the city issues the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. So, uh, what is it, a zero out invoice type thing, kind of, kind of saying like this is how much we put in, this is what the city is providing for you. Um, and, and then it's kind of like a handshake, like thanks for doing business. Um, but yeah, I mean. That, that's something that y'all unfortunately have to decide.
So one of my questions is, this is not the Nacogdoches City Chamber of Commerce. This is the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce. And, um, I'm wondering why we don't have county financial participation in this event? Or co- county, uh, police or ca- you know?
Well, let me, let me say one thing.
Charge them?
So I've seen, yes, I've seen, um, chambers that are larger or even have covered a couple of different cities. And some of the large events, or their one annual large event being in the middle of town and that city. Pro bono, you know, providing PD and fire, um, EMS, so forth. Eh, as well as the public works component. One thing to remember though. So even when we're down on staffing is an example, that's that much more OT. So if you're seeing some growth in some of those areas, or if the event gets bigger, it's likely to continue to grow. These are not budgeted items annually, so that's another thing to think about is that. In budgeting over the next fiscal year, should we, and I think we should. But we really need to build in the cost of these as well, so they're fully burdened. Now, I know Bill's alluded to it, you've, y'all have brought in SO, uh, for different events as well. And when we're down in staffing numbers, sometimes the, you're just, you're going to have to bring others vetted by, through PD. And contract with them. Now, then you invariably get into the whole, well, why didn't you use just our staff and our personnel for it? So, uh, these are why y'all get the big bucks. I mean, we, we, we.
That hurt.
Sorry, Brett. Um, we really, or at least a star in Hollywood for it, Brett. So. We should be budgeting around these though, uh, moving forward. And if we have fee structures that can help at least offset some of it. Or you al- also have to ask your, ask yourself, okay, yes, it's a membership driven organization, the chamber. Um, we're trying to promote business. Do you continue to do it at that rate, or do you do it up to a certain point knowing that your costs, I mean, costs on everything are going up? I mean, our, our fuel budget is probably about to go up because, and CPI is up, so everything's about to get more expensive again for a little while. But these are the things that we need to ponder three dimensionally.
We also don't want to nickel and dime them to death on fees, you know?
Correct, because they are partners.
Yeah.
So.
And there's a lot of free work that they do trying to get all this stuff done.
So, so we do need to.
It's Ashley's problem.
We, we can try to budget around this.
What are you talking about, free wo- free work that they do?
All the volunteers that come down.
Yeah.
There you go. Chamber of Commerce people that helped put this on that don't get paid or anything.
Yeah. Well, the, the other thing is this, as, you're going to hate me for this, Ashley. As we collect more hotel and more hotel funds that would come back this direction. You know, you've got to think about, how much do you want, do you want to direct more into overtime towards that? Because it would be eligible, it's, it's heads and beds, not in the Godfather sense, but it's heads and beds.
Yep, hot text. There it goes. But, I mean, really, I hate to tell you, Ashley.
Oh, I mean, that's a sticky situation. The Blueberry does not result in as many hotel stays as one might think. And I don't mean that to put you on the event at all. Um, it's great marketing for the city, but. You have to prove that it directly results in overnight stays and I have the numbers.
And ri- but, but however, Rig Down as an example does. I thought it had further, much further.
They have a lot more people coming out of town, but guess where they're staying?
In their trucks.
Well, that's why they have a cap.
Occupancy was down the month of September and same with short-term rentals.
Wow.
Okay, but, but the difference is, is that Old Town Rig Down.
Yeah.
Puts a quarter of a million dollars to a half a million dollars back into the city.
Correct, even, even to city facilities in this last case, yeah.
Literally back into the city, you know?
That was something I was going to get into a bit as far as, you know, we are not going to recoup our costs in these. Because we do see benefits in multiple different areas of the city. Um, so when we're talking about event permit fees. On the staff side, it's more getting a little bit of buy-in, um, and getting people to contribute, whether it's Old Town Rig Down. You know, if they are categorized as a large event that pays five hundred dollars, maybe we put that five hundred dollars towards litter abatement or something that beautifies the whole city. But is still not going to pay the city back for the labor, um, and that's okay because they contribute, you know, either directly back to the city or back to partner organizations. Um, so bringing the fee, um, question up was not to fully pay the city back. Um, because we want to be good partners, good neighbors. Um, but there are some things, um, like Mr. Revell was talking about, you know, we don't necessarily budget for all of the overtime. That police department puts in or public works or parks, um, and so those costs either need to be budgeted by the city. Or passed on to the event organizer or find some other sort of trade-off. Um, so I think there are quite a few different options.
You remember when we were talking about budget. Uh, last year and. The, the key word was revenue. Where we get our revenue, it's Avalon taxes and sales tax. And a little bit from fees and permits or whatever. So. Sooner or later, you either have to increase your revenue or reduce your expenses. And, and. And the Blueberry Festival is, it, and, and I'm not knocking them, i- it's not our expense, you know? It, it's, it's money that we basically give back to the Chamber of Commerce. They should have some skin in that game. Because they have none right now.
And that's certainly up to council and that's one of the, um, proposals I'll show to y'all as far as some possible event struct- or event fee structures. Um, and they would fall into one of those. Um, so a few of the options we have up on your screen, um, I wanted to show you all. Um, some of our peer cities and kind of what they are charging and kind of their process. Um, unfortunately, there is not one size fits all, uh, method for all of these cities to charge event permit fees. We found umpteen million examples, um, everybody does it a little bit differently. Um, these are communities that are similar in, um, size and competi- composition in Nacogdoches, have a university nearby, same distance to a ma- major metropolitan. Um, that we're using as kind of our peer cities. Um, you see it's a bit all over the place. City Brenham charges you a twin- uh, ten dollar event. Application fee and that's it. Um, Corsicana, um, Lufkin and Stevenville do not have event permit fees. Um, the reason Lufkin does not is because they don't have any events in their downtown area that are not city or CBB sponsored. They don't have outside organizations coming in and throwing those unless the city or their CBB is a partner organization or the hosting organization. Um, for Huntsville, you only pay for the police presence. Um, Kilgore and Seguin, um, get a little bit more down the nitty gritty. As far as they charge per trash can, off-duty officer, street closures and things like that. There are also some examples, I know these cities are nowhere near like Nacogdoches, um, but I wanted to show you some of the more extreme examples. Um, Louisville is more of kind of an à la carte, um, event permit fee where they cha- uh, charge an overall administration fee. Then you pay for your event type plus your street closures and they charge you per street to close. Um, per city staff that has to be there, emergency medical that needs to be there, um, so those things could get quite costly. Um, the city of Bryan has a permit fee that is, you know, much more in line than would probably something that we would do here in Nacogdoches. Um, but they do have a very large deposit. Um, also depending on what city services you request, if you pay a two thousand dollar deposit for four thousand people. And you need trashcans and janitorial and street closures, they subtract that from your deposit, so you may only get two hundred dollars back. Um, so that I think is a bit misleading, but that is the process they follow there. Um, so we've really kind of seen it run the gamut. Um, the two that we see most often are kind of these buildable fee structures or the flat fee structure. Um, these are the two that city staff thinks would be the easiest to implement. Of course, these are not the only two options. Um, if you all look at these two fee structures and say, I hate them all, go back to the drawing board, we can certainly do that. Uh, but what we see most often is these buildable fees where you would have a base fee for all events. And then depending on what you are going to do, if you're serving alcohol, handing police presents and are doing fireworks and need a hundred streets closed. You would pay per item, um, and each item would have a dollar amount attached to it. Um, if you were doing a flat fee, it would just be a small event is a hundred dollars, a large event is five hundred dollars or whatever flat fee you chose. Um, plus, um, some extra costs for alcohol and then your police overtime. Um, so those are the two we see most often, even though they're implemented in a little bit different ways per community. Um, and those would be the two that, um, staff would like some direction on unless council doesn't like either one of those options. And we can look at, um, some other possible scenarios.
So if you go to buildable fees on, on the, the Blueberry Festival, you're, you're talking about twenty-one thousand dollars.
Roughly, yes, sir. Um, if, if not more, honestly. Um, there are some cities like Austin, which again, I know is not a comparable to Nacogdoches, um, but you can tell they have many, many large events. Um, and they charge per event, um, they charge for every fire truck that needs to be there. Um, every sanitation vehicle that's there uses barricade, um, and most of their event fees are thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, so the buildable fees, depending on, you know, if you charged everything as a dollar, it's not that cumbersome. Um, but those, I think, have the potential to get a little bit in the higher range versus a flat fee could be something where it's just. We are wanting some buy-in from some of our event organizers, um, just to put a little money, um, back into the city. That could then be used for whatever council determines that would be used for.
What would be your recommendation, Jess?
Oh, man. I should have known someone was going to ask that. Um, my personal recommendation would be, and of course, I don't speak for the rest of my colleagues that have helped me work on this. Um, my personal recommendation, and I think the one that most people were leaning towards was more of a flat fee. Where it would be a flat fee that you pay a certain amount for a small event, large event, a running event. Um, you would have to pay a little bit for your alcohol permit, for your, um, your park rental like you would, like you do now. Um, and then also do your police department overtime. Um, and in the past, those are the only overtime costs that any events have been charged. Of course, it's up to council if we want to look at, do we pay for parks overtime and public works overtime, um, and things like that. But I think the flat fee is easier to navigate and is more streamlined for any event organizer. So that way, if they look at buildable, it may be, I have no idea what my event fee is going to be, but if they look at flat fee, it's a little bit easier for them to figure out. Um, in a little bit faster.
Now, I gue- I guess the other one is, and I, I might mention part of it, but also triggered a few other thoughts. I guess for some events, you, you even mentioned Austin, so if it's a nonprofit, they handle some things a little differently. Uh, you said with South by Southwest, is that waving? Oh, ACL, sorry, I've, I've forgotten all the Austin area stuff quickly. Um, and then you have the other extreme, which is Galveston, where you're talking about where they have to cordon off downtown. We're talking about Biker Rally or even Mardi Gras. They're actually paying the city. No, no, it's not just picking up the police, it's not just picking up all, all of those other costs, they're paying the city. I mean, there's a, they go through an RFP process to, they have an event, the event organizer, so. Yeah, eh, I don't know if the answer in the near term is flat fee. That if you ended up with larger, non, and I mean, more private events or for-profit type events. Unlike, uh, Rig Down, that maybe you have a default that if something really big came and it was like a for-profit or something. That, yeah, you're going to pay for it. On top of that, maybe something above a normal buildable fee thing. But if it's, you know, with, I think part of it with your nonprofits needs to be. Reasonable, the flat fee would probably be a wa- a way of, of starting with it. But I don't, there, there's probably some scenarios where the buildable fee thing does make sense.
Ashley, do you know how much, uh, the chamber made on the Blueberry Festival last year?
I don't, I'm sorry. Eh, they might have that in their report, but I don't have that number.
It was six figures.
Okay.
I think that's really important, I mean, what you're, you're following.
Seems like having them at the table to say, hey, I mean, we want to participate in this, certainly. I mean, I think we all value what Blueberry brings to town and to, to all of us, but we're, we're paying out a lot of money for it.
I mean. The way Rick's talking and I completely agree because I see it every day. You know, things are still going up and they're going, and like you said, they're going to go up for a little while longer and then they'll probably come back down. But you look five years out, you know, and it may cost you a hundred thousand dollars to have a Blueberry Festival here. I mean.
I'm, I'm.
Where's the revenue?
Well, and let me, let me throw this out and I'm glad Bill, now granted, I'm not lumping these together, they're not all made equal in this. But the total special event OT, um, and this is, these were not covered by anything but city funds, correct? Okay, so it's about sixty thousand, uh, in twenty twenty-four of OT, just, uh, and that's just PD, right? That's just PD. So I, I do think we need to start budgeting around this too.
So you want to build it into the budget?
I do want to build it into the budget because it's, it's a hidden, it's a, I don't, some people call it a hidden tax, a hidden cost, a hidden. But at the end of the day, it's, it's part of the cost of doing business.
It's a cost with no revenue.
Right.
To offset it, none.
We have those overtime costs with public works as well, with Parks Department, with, whether it's Blueberry or another event where we, you know, cities, the city pays. Parks guys to come in and drive around and pick up trash the whole time during the event, um, just so we don't have something so cumbersome at the end of the event. So we do have a lot of those overtime costs for multiple departments.
So.
And I'll, let me interject one thing real quick, Mike, um, Rick. Um, wh- what we haven't talked about, um, is right now we have a fire department located downtown. That's going to change in the near future and I, I mentioned that to, to Mike and he might can address that, but at some point, you know. It was easy for them to have a, an, a presence here. At some point, that's not going to be as easy. And Mike, Mike, Mike can address that, but it, there's going to be some additional costs there, I would think, just to have them come to an event like Blueberry. Whereas before, you know, they had guys here already. I mean, so it might not have been such a cost to the city as it was.
And that's what I said earlier. One to five years, this whole downtown is going to look different, you know?
Good evening from Mayor Council. Um, Jerry pretty much summed it up. Uh, there's some built-in cost savings with, with our, in terms of festivals. With our, uh, our station being right there. We do hire people for events, um, at, at least two, up to four, depending on the size of the event. So those overtime costs can incur, but we also piggyback off of the crew that's here. And so if that crew's not here, then we could look at those costs certainly going up, just because of, from a, a staffing perspective. So Jerry's absolutely correct on that one.
So I'm, I'm wondering.
So I'm, I'm wondering if we, oh, case is coming to.
He's gonna pay for it. Oh, I'm excited.
Y'all just, uh, charge my account. Uh, just, just since Jessica kinda sorta asked about public works, uh, I just was looking at my email. Just for the twenty twenty-two Old Town Rigdown, uh, just for numbers sake, I think we had about a thousand invested in man-hours. Equipment was a different animal, uh, we, we have charges for that, too. Um, I think all in, it was about a eleven thousand dollar investment on the public works side for, just for that event. We could get yearly totals like PD had, but just for some info.
But, but, but you, you got money back, this city got money back.
Yeah, and I'm not picking on Old Town Rigdown, that just happened to be the.
Right.
Email I had was about that event, so not saying at all that we should charge Old Town. I was just kinda trying to give a perspective on what, what the investment was on the public works side for, for just that event. And it, it would probably be similar for other events, too.
So, but, but this is, this is where I think y'all need to think about the public good part versus the, kinda the, and, and the nonprofit versus, so. Let's, look, Juneteenth, about two thousand. Suicide Awareness Walk, about five hundred. Our Lady of Guadalupe, uh, about nine and a half, nine fifty. I think we, we've got ones in here that you probably would wanna build in, it's the right thing to do, they're not making money. It's part of, it's a, it's a, either a cultural element or a positive thing or all the above component of being a, a town and being who we are. But then we get into, you've got others, and then we, we need to build in, let's just say the Christmas parade, right now, thirteen thousand on PD. Now granted, we had a, two kind of about to do it, not do it. I think at a, at a point, since we're paying for it, we can probably do some designation, at least, city, city event versus city sponsored and probably de- design some of these, build in the budget that, okay, these are really city sponsored. Uh, and then there's others, you know, be that Rigdown or Blueberry, uh, or Juneteenth or any of these. Uh, definitely Dia de los Muertos, uh, as well. But then at a point in there, I think we're gonna have to have some other decisions made that, okay, are you gonna tack other fees on? So maybe you eat up to a certain point of, of city contribution within reason and then set that aside for X number of events. And, and granted, several are, are, you've got, so here's one, Helping House fi- five K, ten K, three hundred seventy-three dollars. So I'd look at some of the size of the events, the impact of the events. And, and I'm not saying you, there's anything wrong with the charitable, charitable, charitable piece, cause there's a, there's a component we need to do. But, like you said, eh, there's also some events that if you were collectively, probably take, all told, and we will do it as an all told, cause if this is just PD. So my gut is, we're probably gonna come back and it's gonna be a hundred something, uh, in this next budget. And some things where the ability to pay, um, probably needs to be built into this. And, and when I say the ability, I don't think Juneteenth or Our Lady of Guadalupe, that's not the point of those. And that's not the ones that, I don't, I wouldn't be recommending pulling the rug out from under them. They, they could become city, either city sponsored or city, however we, we do it. But when you've got all hands on deck, and I've, I've done this in Kima, I've dealt with in Galveston, with a high, high concentration, at a point, you will have to start either doing some cost allocation to it and other skin in the game. Because it is either gonna impact your service, your ability to deliver services, I mean, there's a point, now, we're not there yet. But if it gets to the point where you've gotta decide how many events you could even handle, that's a whole different issue. If we ever grow to that point where we don't have enough staff to do it with, uh, on a regular basis for people even to take, um, and I have dealt with that, where you have so many events, no one can even take vacation or get sick unless they're on, uh, basically get hurt on the job. That's, that's a whole, but they basically can't even take the time, uh, to take a vacation, that, that puts you in a whole different situation.
Okay, Jessica, say, okay, we have this workshop tonight, okay, and then when, so, and, and we give you all your answers that you want, okay? So when will this, when will this come before the council? And if it's approved, when, when will it take effect?
Um, my desire, if, and I mean, I think we still have a little bit further to discuss on, on the fees, um, just to give us some clear direction. But as far as the ordinance and the guidelines, I would anticipate, um, we could get them on a council meeting by the first of March. Just because we don't have too many edits on here, from what I understand from our conversation tonight. Um, so as soon as council voted on that ordinance and those guidelines, that would go into effect. Um, a fee structure, if we have some clear direction and we can put some numbers in these things, um, we could bring it back either as a discussion item or as a, a vote, um, sometime in March would be my assumption.
We could also consider having a workshop right before city council meeting. So if it's, you know, if it's something we bring back to y'all, y'all give us some direction on the fee schedule, for example. We bring that back at that workshop, you know, give, give further direction or clarification or approval at that point. And then we close down the workshop, open up the, the regular meeting and, and that's on the agenda. So it's, it's, you know, assuming that was approved at that point, so.
And I do wanna mention as well, even if the fee, um, structure is approved at a council meeting, you know, March first, whatever the, uh, first meeting date is, it will take our finance department, just a little bit of time, um, to create those codes, so that way if people pay into it, we have a, a place to put those things. So there will be some work on the backend, so it may not be live, you know, that very next Wednesday, um, but would be soon afterwards.
I think it would be helpful if you guys came to us with actual figures, like this is how much we want the flat fee to be. And then we could go, okay, or yes or no, rather than us sitting here debating fees, you know?
Well, you can.
Cause you don't wanna run people off.
Like your five Ks, I mean, you've got several that are, you know, it's a couple hundred buck impact of, of PD. So does that mean they'll go away? Now, one reason, like in Kima where we added some of the other fees over time is cause it was, there were so many, they were coming from Houston or the whole Clear Lake area or Galveston County, to the point that, I mean, you could have had a five K every single weekend for the whole year. And so you had, you had, I mean, obviously, that's all OT at that point, if it's all hands on deck all the time. So it's just all pure OT for PD and your public works crews. So if at least we could try to capture some of those, that I know that those are probably all nonprofits, too. But if it means, you know, they're not putting anything in and now they're putting five hundred in or they're putting seven fifty in and that could be, if they have to add five or ten bucks to each of their applications. I mean, we can work with them to try to see if, if it'll put them out of business, that's not our intent. If, if we can work together to make the numbers match, it's a different animal.
Could we have that same discussion with the chamber?
So, so, so the, the, let me add, let me just back up just a smid, um, if you don't mind.
No.
But I really think this whole thing about the Blueberry Festival is a unique issue. And I, following up on your question and also on, on your suggestion, Brad, I would really like for you all to sit down and think through, and including the county, I mean, I'm wondering, I, I, I see so many cities having to support everything and then the county is actually using facilities and using and not participating. So the county, whether vendors have to pay, you know, twenty bucks for their booths or, uh, but these are things we don't know what's gonna handicap people or what's going to hurt them or if we take part of their profits. So I think the Blueberry Festival, if you all would think it through and come up with what you think is reasonable and what we can aff.
Well, the county wouldn't collect hotel motel tax, so not getting into heads and beds, but this is an example. They would probably, yes, they have the, the expo, but when you're talking about, when you're really talking about the chamber, yes, I know we're the, really the city-state in the middle of it all. I wouldn't think that they would have, you know, just like we're trying to finally get to the point where allocating costs to then budget for it. I seriously doubt that they would have some kind of set aside, but.
But they might be, anyway, all I'm saying, we don't have to do that today, but if you think through the Blueberry Festival and you think through your major things, I think then we could, you know, get a principle after that. So after you think through the, the, uh, mara- the, not the marathons, but the walks and the runs and the, I'm the walk person, but the runs and the, um, and all the other events, which ones are nonprofits? And come up with, yeah, give us some, some ideas.
And we can certainly pull together, um, information on some of our, our big events that happen pretty often as far as what our actual overtime is and city contribution. And then staff is happy to take a stab at some of these event fees, we just didn't want to come to you tonight and say we've already decided. Um, if council opinion was, you don't wanna charge event fees at all. So we didn't want to seem like it was a done deal, but we can certainly, um, you know, take our best estimate at some of these things. Um, I will mention, almost all of our events held in Nacogdoches are done by nonprofits. Um, we do have a nonprofit fee waiver on the books right now that exempts them from the facility rental fee, which right now for Blueberry Festival, they don't have to pay the fifty dollar park rental, um, or park pavilion rental. Um, so that is currently on the books, but it, there is a caveat in that saying this does not exempt them from future event fees. Um, so we wouldn't have to edit that, um, I would just caution against saying nonprofits are exempt from all of these things because almost all of our events are done by a nonprofit.
Maybe to cut out the surprise element, talk to each of those people and say, you know, these are our costs, it's a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. What do, what do you guys think that you could afford or how much do you want, what would run you away, what would keep you here? And, you know, it's a little bit of horse trading, but.
But look at it as one, a five K, if it means ten dollars more per applicant and you, they end up paying for a five hundred dollars worth of, of PD presence, then that's the kind of discussion. If it ends up becoming something else that, hey, we, we, the whole event's gonna go away. Otherwise, then that's on a larger scale and that's a different animal.
We don't wanna run people out of town, a lot of it is branding, too, cause it brands Nacogdoches as a place friendly for five Ks and friendly for festivals and stuff.
Does it, does it, if, if we don't have the fee structure set, um, can we still, at our next council meeting, pass the ordinance and say fees will be determined or do we wanna wait to approve an ordinance?
Jerry, I might, I'll defer to Jerry, but I think, wouldn't you want the fee structure?
Well, yeah, I mean, what, um, the way I have it written right now is, is kind of a blank, we kinda need something. You know, some direction, whether it's, uh, you know, the fee is located at the city secretaries, the fee schedules at states. I've seen that several times in our ordinances, the, or, or, but at least we need something to point people to when they're looking at ordinance. If, if they're gonna be paying a fee, that it's been passed by council and, you know, at, at some location. At some point, and then I'll put this on your radar, we're looking at, uh, creating a kind of a master fee schedule. And so that's something we're working on right now, uh, as staff. And so that's where it would be located at that point, but we, we're just not there yet, so.
Jerry, can I ask a question, um, since I'm all aware? Um, would council be able to adopt the guidelines without the ordinance?
They could, yeah, eh, you just don't have the enforceability of, you know, if there's a violation of the ordinance.
Mike, do you wanna talk?
You got him, but they work.
I feel like you need to talk, do you need to talk? Yeah. I'm just feeling it.
In your spirit, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, in Leander, we went through a very similar exercise with, uh, multiple departments that are affected. Typically, you know, our focus, kinda like this discussion, was focused on events that impact rights of way, that are gonna negatively, potentially negatively impact residents or businesses that aren't in any way affiliated with an event. And it didn't necessarily apply to birthdays at pavilions or things that we have facilities and structures and guidelines for already. It was those unknowns, people that would approach us with activities. So, um, we're, we're, we're discussing kinda, and not meaning to bring this to council now, but we're discussing bringing clearer, um, itemized fees. What, what our costs are itemized for some of the known events that we know next year, we're well aware that we're gonna host and participate or partner on these bigger events, even smaller ones that, that are known and I'm not too familiar with yet. Putting together a cost sheet for those, for each one of those, comparing those with what we know are, are potentially true costs if there's no revenue associated with those in any capacity, whether parks is collecting booth fees or anything, or CBB's collecting booth fees. That's a consideration, too, so all those are variables. And, and we may not have a clear picture as to which direction we should go, but if some type of fee format can be sort of guided to us now, we'll build something, it may not be perfect, it won't be perfect. But as we test it in the market, as we test it with folks who are interested in hosting new events and even folks that are, have traditionally participated in events that didn't have this in the past, you'll, you'll see those effects and we'll know kind of what needs to evolve policy-wise and fee-wise, so. Um, and we're, we're just actively having these discussions as, as you all are talking, so it's been very helpful.
Okay, so what would you recommend? As far as a flat, as far as a flat fee, that way we could get this on the books and then, and then, and then maybe tweak it later on.
Are you asking me for a recommendation on a dollar amount? Oh, I do not have that today. We've seen, it kinda runs the gamut depending on, um, the city. We've seen some that have done those flat fees where it's a small event and it's a fifty dollar application fee and twenty-five dollars if you're having alcohol. There are some other cities that your small event fee is starting at two fifty and then if you're wanting to have fireworks, alcohol, it goes up from there. Um, so I don't have numbers to plug into those today, um, but I, we certainly can at a council meeting.
And I don't think we need another two-hour workshop, but what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is, you know, before, you know, a, a council meeting in March, you know, we could have a, a short workshop where, where we're bringing that back to you and saying, this is what we're recommending, what do you think? Oh, I think, I think that number needs to be higher.
And I think it would help if we had more information. If you come to us and say it's costing us a hundred thousand dollars and we wanna charge a ten dollar fee, I'll be like, huh, that's weird. You know, I mean, we need, we need how much it's costing us and some recommendation. That would help me make a decision.
And I think we've outlined some principles, we may not have, have said them, but our principles are, other people shouldn't be making a lot of money at our expense, so that's one of the principles. Another is we don't wanna punish very poor organizations that contribute to the well-being of our city. And then the other is when we can recoup expenses reasonably by charging, by adding an extra five dollars to a ticket or to a booth or to a whatever, and those are all things that you have to figure out, but these are principles.
And, and let me throw one other thing out. You know, with the, the frequency of some of those five Ks and both Galveston and, and yes, I got tired, cause at one point I used to run them. In Kima and Galveston both. Then it evolved, it did evolve, you did have some businesses that those street closures, they kind of in protest would not, instead of opening and trying to benefit from it, some of them would even just shut down and said, no, we're not gonna open. So if there's an opportunity in looking at this with PD, like what would be a, a better or an optimum kind of a general five K route to always have if, if those make applications? Maybe something that's less of a conflict. Those are other things that we could also offer up to y'all, like, you know, instead of just advertising them all, run by Brad's house and throw your cup.
Which you've started the trend now, you do know that.
I'm gonna get a shirt made now, yeah, so.
Maybe you've gone viral.
It'll, it'll be easier to collect them if they're all in one place, Brad.
Tough collection center.
That, that Shiner's mine, by the way, so, but we'll, we'll just, uh.
It's the vapes that get me down.
One, one consideration we may add to the, uh, the ordinance itself under the fee section is the giving, a granting, or this council granting the authority to the city manager to waive the fee for, you know, if you have that organization that comes in that doesn't have the funds or whatever. Problem is, once you open that door, everybody's gonna be asking for that waiver. But at, at least it, it gives the, it gives the, the city manager that authority and not having to bring that to the council, every application that comes in that's asking for that waiver. I mean, I'm just kinda throwing that out, right now it's not in there, but, you know, it's just something maybe consider. Or on, on the alternative, if you have a Massey Rose Foundation who is donating, uh, concession stand, it might be a consideration to say, hey, we don't need to charge them that fee. I mean, but it, but it does put that, it gives it, your council giving authority to the city manager to make that determination at that point.
And one thing I've heard about recently was like an outside company bringing in pickleball tournaments when maybe the city needs to bring in pickleball tournaments and, and make some money instead of just letting them charge fees.
And as of right now, for outside companies, we do have a fee structure, if, um, any organization is wanting to host a pickleball tournament, they do pay the city in order to use our facilities and things like that, so we're. They do pay the city in order to use our facilities and things like that, so we're, we're not making a killing off of them. Um, but we, the city does recoup some of those costs and they're low cost for us to actually put on, so. We have some fee structures in place for things like that, but, you know.
But maybe lean into, in the future, we want, we, the city wants to put on these pickleball tournaments and maybe not just let all the profit run out of the door.
Counsel, I was just gonna add, I know this is, this discussion is actually kind of a precursor for some evaluation we're already doing internally. Before I arrived, I know council had sort of asked staff to, to evaluate all of our fees and, and our permits and. Look at potential ways to recover costs in ways that we're not already recovering, so we're in that evaluation process now. Don't have a timetable for bringing that to you yet, but, um, the principles you're talking about, some of the ways that you want staff to think about establishing fees or identifying fees is gonna help. Help us evaluate other fees, things like permits and, and applications that we may not be charging anything for. Or some that we haven't changed in thirty, forty years, so, uh, any input is absolutely very helpful.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Are you through, Jessica?
Yes, sir, I have my marshmallows and we'll bring back a proposal on fees with some more of the information you've requested and, um, the few edits to our ordinance and guidelines.
Any, yeah, any discussion from the audience? Okay.
Well, the, the only thing, and, and the only thing I have thought about, too, is, we can look at this, too. Could it be a flat fee up to a certain size? And then if you've got ones that are coming in that are. Scale-wise, could it then default to a buildable one? And that, that's, that may be simpler for the smaller organizations or the pro bono ones to deal with. And then, and the reason I'm saying that, could we have a scenario where, you know, basically for-profit, uh. Keep in mind, there have been sporting event ones that are for-profit, there's, there's also others, again, they operate in. In places that are a little bit bigger than us, but I could see us evolving to that sooner than later.
And there were a few cities we looked at, I think one was Granberry, I may be wrong, and then I'll have to double check, they had more of the hybrid model, where if it was a. Smaller event, had very minimal impact on city services, it was a, a very flat, two hundred dollars. Um, and then if it was a larger, um, event, something blueberry-sized or Old Town Rig Down, then you went to more buildable. Um, and I believe in that they had, I need to, I'm not sure if it's Granberry or not, now I'll have to look, um, I believe they had some caveat on there that. City manager could waive certain fees dependent upon impact, not trade-off of the city, they had a much more professional term, um, for that, but kind of, um, some of our horse trading we'd be doing. Um, so there are some cities that use that model, so we can certainly look into something like that.
It's a lot easier to deal with somebody that's, you're on the receiving end of funds than on the giving end, you know? I'll just say that, so. Okay, anybody got anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned, God bless this great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.